When I'm around without you my dear, It seems there's a longing for you still. All I have to do now is sit alone and cry In our little cabin home on a hill. Now someone has taken you from me And left me here all alone. Just listen to the rain beat on my windowpane In our little cabin home on a hill. I hope you are happy tonight as you are For in my heart's that longing for you still. I'll just keep it there so I won't be alone In our little cabin home on a hill. Now someone has taken you from me And left me here all alone. Just listen to the rain beat on my windowpane In our little cabin home on a hill. So when you have gone to the end of the way And find there's no more happiness for you Then your thoughts turn back once more If you will to our little cabin home on a hill. Now someone has taken you from me And left me here all alone. Just listen to the rain beat on my windowpane In our little cabin home on a hill. Now someone has taken you from me And left me here all alone. Just listen to the rain beat on my windowpane In our little cabin home on a hill. Just listen to the rain beat on my windowpane In our little cabin home on a hill. I sit here alone on the banks of the river. The lonesome wind blows and the water rolls high. I hear a voice call out there in the darkness. I hear a voice call to a lonesome cry. The water rolls high on the river at midnight. I sit on the shore to dream and to cry. The woman I loved, she left me this morning With no one to love or kiss me goodnight. We sat there one night on the banks of the river. Stood there holding hands and making our vows. Said we'd never part, we'd be happy forever. But if you loved her so bad, she's gone to me now. The water rolls high on the river at midnight. I sit on the shore to dream and to cry. The woman I loved, she left me this morning With no one to love or kiss me goodnight. Fog is rolling down from Memphis. Dark clouds hang around your door. It's a long, long way from Mississippi To the Gulf of Mexico. Well, make my home on Mississippi. I'm wrapped in bed on a steamboat line. We hit the deck on Monday morning. Gonna make the duck on Saturday night. Had me a gal way up in Dixie. Tipped my hat every time she passed Till she ran off with the riverboat gang. In a black tuxedo and a tiny mustache. Well, make my home on Mississippi. I'm wrapped in bed on a steamboat line. We hit the deck on Monday morning. Gonna make the duck on Saturday night. Now when I die, just one favor. Don't bury me down in the cold, cold ground. Just wrap me up down by the river. Roll me over and point me south. Well, make my home on Mississippi. I'm wrapped in bed on a steamboat line. We hit the deck on Monday morning. Gonna make the duck on Saturday night. Gonna make the duck on Saturday night.
Roberts, this way. You see the red trash can? Come on, Charlie. Charlie.
I'll go tell him. I'll tell her.
Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. I'm worried now, but I won't be worried long. Well, there's twenty old legs, a chain around my leg. Yeah, there's twenty old legs, a chain around my leg. Twenty old legs, a chain around my leg. On each leg, the initials of my name. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. I'm worried now, but I won't be worried long. I had to judge, what might be my fine? I had to judge, what might be my fine? I had to judge, what might be my fine? Twenty long years on the rock mountain line. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. I'm worried now, but I won't be worried long. The train that I rode on was sixteen coats long. Yeah, the train that I rode on was sixteen coats long. The train that I rode on was sixteen coats long. Girl I loved on that train and young. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. It takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. I'm worried now, but I won't be worried long. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. Takes a worried man to sing a worried song. I'm worried now, but I won't be worried long.
Thank you, Roberts.
Let's have the first band sing. Anyone else sing?
Well, we're out of here. Thank you all for coming out.
Yeah.
Now it's thirty.
One more?
Robert.
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 So machine?
I remember as a boy having one of them joys. I watched the trains as they'd go by. But the whistles lost their sound. You could hear for miles around. It's rolled across that greenbelt trussel high. But the whistles don't sound like they used to. Lately, not many trains go by. Hard times across the land, you know, work for a railroad man. And the greenbelt trussel, that all seems to hide. On the riverbank, I'd stand with a cane in my hand. Watch freight trains up against the sky. With the black smoke trailing back As they rolled along the track Towards the sunset at the close of day. But the whistles don't sound like they used to. Lately, not many trains go by. Hard times across the land, you know, work for a railroad man. And the greenbelt trussel, that all seems to hide. When them lonesome whistles whine, I'd get rambling on a mile. Lord, I wish they still sounded that way. And as I turned and headed for home, Lord, she'd rumble over long Tore across that greenbelt trussel high. But the whistles don't sound like they used to. Lately, not many trains go by. Hard times across the land, you know, work for a railroad man. And the greenbelt trussel, that all seems to hide. But the whistles don't sound like they used to. Lately, not many trains go by. Hard times across the land, you know, work for a railroad man. And the greenbelt trussel, that all seems to hide. Well, hard times across the land, you know, work for a railroad man. And the greenbelt trussel, that all seems to hide.
You all may have recognized that one From the times of yore.
From the great Atlantic Ocean To the wild Pacific shore. From the green old smoky mountains To the south down by the moor. She's mighty tall and handsome, And I'm quite well by y'all. The regular combination on that Wabash Cannonball. So listen to the jingle, the rumble, and the roar As she glides along the woodlands Over the hills and by the shore. Hear the mighty rush of the engine, Hear the lonesome hobo's call As you're traveling across the country On that Wabash Cannonball. Well, eastern states are dandy, So the people always say From New York to St. Louis and Chicago, by the way. To the hills of Minnesota Where the rippling waters fall. No changes need be taken On that Wabash Cannonball. So listen to the jingle, the rumble, and the roar As she glides along the woodlands Over the hills and by the shore. Hear the mighty rush of the engine, Hear the lonesome hobo's call As you're traveling across the country On that Wabash Cannonball. Well, I came down to Saint Albans one cold December day. As they rolled into the station, You could hear all the people say There's a fellow from North Carolina. He's long and he's tall. He came down to pick for us. He rode the Wabash Cannonball. So listen to the jingle, the rumble, and the roar As she glides along the woodlands Over the hills and by the shore. Hear the mighty rush of the engine, Hear the lonesome hobo's call As you're traveling across the country On that Wabash Cannonball. So I sing to the jingle, the rumble, and the roar As she glides along the woodlands Over the hills and by the shore. Hear the mighty rush of the engine, Hear the lonesome hobo's call As you're traveling across the country On that Wabash Cannonball. As you're traveling across the country On that Wabash Cannonball.
Thank y'all, folks. I think we're gonna hand it over to your host.
Thank you, Otter Creek, for that beautiful music. Good evening, everyone, And welcome to Tales from the Watershed Here at beautiful St. Albans Bay Park. We're so excited to have you all here. We're so glad you've joined us tonight As the sun sets over the lake. And we're excited to gather and share stories That connect to the waters That shape our lives and our communities. Whether you grew up swimming in this bay, Farmed on nearby land, Paddled these waters, Or are here for the very first time, We all have something to share And something to learn. Tonight, we'll hear stories from community members That reflect life along Lake Champlain. We invite you to listen with an open heart And an open mind And to think about your own connection to this place. Maybe you'll be inspired To tell your own story next time. A special thank you To all of our storytellers, Our volunteers, and partners Who helped make this event possible. Please don't be shy. Go and say hi to everyone gathered over on this side And learn from these great organizations And all about the wonderful work that they do. Also, don't forget to enter our raffle Over at the other side For your chance to take home A beautifully hand-painted rain barrel For use in your garden. And of course, thank each and every one of you For showing up tonight And being part of this community. So settle in, get comfortable, and let the stories begin. Steffi Drago is the Ecological Restoration Fellow with the Vermont Natural Resources Council. Steffi lives in Burlington and works for the Vermont...oh goodness. Steffi has worked and studied water resources and restoration ecology in Vermont for about a decade. And is passionate about floodplains and healthy river and stream systems. Thank you Steffi.
Hello everybody. So when thinking of a story to tell tonight, I couldn't help but think just about how much Vermont's rivers and streams are really intertwined with my own personal story. As somebody who works in restoration and wetlands and ecology and river science. So I thought I'd talk a little bit about my trajectory, how I've learned to love the work that I do. And kind of tying it back to the concept of river connectivity. Cause as someone with a river science background, I have to nerd out a little bit about some fun river science concepts. But I kinda wanna start at the beginning. My first time moving here out to Vermont back in 2016. I moved here to take up a position with Eco AmeriCorps, which I think we may actually have some folks out in the audience who are a part of that today. Thank you for your service. But I served at the Natural Resources Conservation Service, who I later got a job with down the line. But this was the first time I really got to explore wetlands. And as somebody who was new in my career, I was really passionate about botany and terrestrial ecology. But also I had a really strong passion for rivers. And when I got this opportunity to work in wetland restoration and wetland science and work on floodplains. It was extremely inspiring to me because it was kind of this space where it married the two. The land and the water, our floodplains kind of being these liminal spaces where when the river reaches flood stage, it branches out all over the floodplain. And the floodplain becomes the river. And it's just a really inspiring landscape to work on. So after my work with the Natural Resources Conservation Service through AmeriCorps. I went off to pursue a master's degree at the University of Vermont studying floodplains. And this is what brought up the concepts of river connectivity that I've become really passionate about. So first I wanna talk about lateral connectivity of rivers and their floodplains. So this is the connection that a river has in order to branch out and spread across its floodplain. And this is a topic that I became really, really passionate about. Here in Vermont, we have very rugged topography. And a lot of the places where we built our roads and our railroads are in our floodplains. And what happens when we have these bermed up features next to our rivers? It constricts our rivers, it makes them flow faster and our rivers aren't able to spread out over the floodplain. And slow down and deposit nutrients and sediment as they are supposed to do with their natural cycles. So we have this situation where we are finding just a lot of issues with this river connectivity throughout the state of Vermont in that, in that kind of essence. So I was really passionate about the concept of wetlands restoration. There's so many incredible practitioners out in the state of Vermont that are doing excellent work conserving land next to rivers. Allowing our rivers to expand and slow down during floods. There's a really awesome story that comes from this research paper back in 2016 by Carrie Watson from UPM. That I think tells a really fascinating kind of watershed story and the importance of our floodplains and that lateral connectivity relationship. So what they did was they studied the impact that Hurricane Irene had on Rutland where there was a really high peak flow. A lot of storm damage versus downstream in Middlebury where they didn't have quite as extreme of storm damage. And surprisingly, they had a much lower peak flow than upstream. So the thing that's in between those two towns is this amazing wetland complex. Of all these wetlands that have been conserved by all sorts of different agencies and organizations throughout the state. And the river was actually able to expand out onto the floodplain, slow down, and lessen the destructive power of the river downstream. And I think this is a really important story and a really important kind of concept to understand that when our rivers have that really important connection to the land. That they're able to spread out and there's so many amazing biological processes that are involved in this as well. Like the leopard frogs need that floodplain connection in order to breed. Even this spring, I was out on the lemon fair and I got to see all of these fish breeding out in the floodplain while the river is at flood stage. And it just really kind of rethinking about how we perceive our rivers as not only going downstream. But also being able to expand and take up space when they're at high flows. So this brings me to the next concept of river connectivity, which is a part of my story now, which is longitudinal connectivity. So this is the idea that the river can flow freely from its headwaters down to its outlets. In my current position with VNRC, I work on dam removal. And that is the main obstruction that prevents our rivers from being able to effectively reach their outlets. So we have over a thousand dams here in Vermont that are, you know, a lot of them no longer serve their original purposes. And they've reached the end of their lifespan. So they're at risk of failing, which can cause destruction downstreams during these high flows that we're finding. They also impound a lot of water and this can increase water temperatures, which isn't great for our cold water loving fish like trout. And it also impedes passage for aquatic organisms in order to be able to reach down to different reaches of the rivers and complete their life cycles. So it's really exciting now to be on this journey of learning more about how we can reconnect our rivers in a different way. Making sure that fish can pass and that we can improve the health of our rivers through removing dams. While there's all this amazing work out there that's being done to reconnect our rivers to their floodplains as well. So thank you for letting me nerd out a little bit on rivers and floodplains and science and connectivity. It's all been a very important part of my story and thank you for letting me share it with you all. Because rivers that are connected are more resilient, especially in the face of climate change as we have more extreme storms. And I think that this is also kind of a lesson we can all take home as well. That communities that are well connected are more resilient in the end too. So thank you so much for listening to me talk and thanks for hosting this event. It's really a fabulous day and yeah, thank you.
Thank you Steffi. Our next speaker is Julie Silverman. Julie is the Conservation Law Foundation's Lake Champlain Senior Lakekeeper. As senior lakekeeper, Julie works to advocate, inform, and inspire people to protect and restore Lake Champlain and its surrounding natural spaces. In order to keep the lake region a magnificent place to live, work, and play. Before joining CLF, Julie worked for the state of Vermont's Aquatic Invasive Species Program. And designed and taught environmental programs focusing on marine debris for the Rosalia Project. She has also founded her own consulting firm. And prior to founding her own business, she spent nearly 20 years developing and growing ECHO. The Leahy Center for Lake Champlain's programs and exhibits on Burlington's waterfront. Julie holds a BA in Biology from Wheaton College and a master's in teaching with a concentration in secondary biology from Tufts University. She is passionate about the outdoors and water in all its forms. She's taught skiing for more than two decades and cruised and raced sailboats on Lake Champlain and both coasts. She loves wildlife watching from the water and on land, hiking, biking, and walking. Please join me in welcoming Julie.
Hi everybody, thanks for being here. I feel like we should all be turning around and like looking at the lake. So just a quick show of hands, how many people have ever...oh, this is a big question. Been inspired by something that they've watched on TV, a movie, or read a book? Just raise your hand. Has anybody had a life-changing experience from watching a TV show, reading a book, or watching a movie? Raise your hand. Oh, one, two, yeah, kinda awesome. Well, I have. My life completely changed at the age of five. I know, right? What was I doing at five? How did it completely change? Well, I saw a movie called Doctor Dolittle. And I'm talking about a really early version, like really before Eddie Murphy version, like a really long time ago. And I was so fascinated by somebody talking to animals. I was like, oh my god, I wanna talk to animals. I'm five, what do I know? I don't know that you can't talk to animals. I'm just blown away by the idea that you could get to know your dog, your cat, the birds, the woodchuck, the squirrels, the chipmunks. Blown away by that idea. I didn't really get that it was fantasy. I also really wanted to be able to go in a huge pink snail and sail across the ocean. Now, some of you that are a little bit older are kinda going, I remember the pink snail. Yeah, I remember the pink snail. But it was really powerful for me. So I spent a lot of time after watching that movie, talking to ants. I would look in the ground and spend a whole lot of time trying to figure out if they could talk to me. I spent a lot of time talking to my dog. Now, how many of you talk to your dogs? Come on, come on, I'm not seeing enough hands. Come on dog, yeah, there's a...yep. My dog Pepper, she was a big fat roly-poly black lab. She was my best friend. She comforted me when I was sad. She literally licked my face, the tears off my face. She was my best friend, so I talked to her all the time. But then I was like realizing that other animals really weren't talking back to me. So, you know, in our family, we had this sort of family room and it was a typical Sunday thing. That's when we watched the Doctor Dolittle movie. Well, another Sunday in the family room flipping on the channel and then another aha moment struck. I saw the Mutual of Omaha's Wild Kingdom. Yeah, I love it. Raise your hand if you remember the Wild Kingdom, yes. Yes, awesome people. So I wanted to be Jim Fowler. I wanted to get in the water, in the Amazon, and hang out with the snakes. I wanted to wrestle the alligator. I wanted to explore the Amazon. I wanted to check out a jaguar. I wanted to understand how bats and how porpoises use sonar to navigate. So that was like my next aha moment. It was like, oh my god, I have gotta go figure out how I can do this. So that was, you heard some of my bio, so you become a biology major and you find out that as you're going through school, you don't really get to hang out with the animals. And I was a little bit crestfallen by that. I was like, well, how am I gonna like make this all happen? What is, how is my life gonna change here? All of my friends were like pre-vet, pre-dental, you know, pre-med. And I was like, I'm pre-life. I liked it all. I wanted to study the animals, I wanted to study the plants, I wanted to talk to the ants. How am I gonna do this? So, you know, life goes on, you find paths, and you find internships and fellowships. And start to understand you can volunteer at places like the New England Aquarium. And you can get jobs at the Museum of Science in Boston. And you can start to work with great horned owls and alligators. And you can work with a porcupine. And I was working with all of these kind of animals and it was great. I was sharing the animal ambassadors with people from all around the world, hundreds of people every day. It was great. I had, well, let's just say uncomfortable moments on stage with animals. Has anyone been pooped on by a snake? Oh, one person has, awesome. Has anyone had a rodent from South Africa, I mean, South America called a hootie crawl up your shorts and bite your underwear? Anybody, anybody? No, no, no? Yeah, these are all things that were happening. I could share, I get people excited and inspired, but there was something missing. I realized that just working with animals, just being the guy or the girl in the water, doing the snorkeling, checking out the fish, wasn't enough. And an opportunity came up for me to help move back to Vermont after being in Massachusetts and really make a difference. And that ECHO Leahy Center on the waterfront in Burlington was an opportunity for me to come back home and help build a world-class institution to share the fish, frogs, the snakes, the turtles with people in the context of understanding the environment that the animals live in. And that was like my aha moment. Like as a kid, talking to the ants was pretty cool, but I didn't really get that in fact, you don't have ants to talk to if you don't have a place for the ants to live. Or the place for the fish to hang out when you're snorkeling, the fish aren't gonna be there if the water, the lake, the rivers, the streams, aren't healthy. So that was like another one of those big aha moments for me. And so you sort of heard that that's a big part of what I do. And, and working at ECHO was a huge part of that. But, you know, it's, it's a big part of this sort of love. I love animals and I came back to Vermont because I love Vermont, I love Lake Champlain. And then it kind of dawned on me too that I'm getting a little older. Someday I might wanna retire, like Colleen Hickey over there, lucky woman, retiring in three weeks from the Lake Champlain Basin Program after working there for 33 years. Plug. What is my legacy gonna be? What am I doing? How am I gonna make a difference? And so that's when I started to say, I need to start to find some, a job that I can actually influence more people, that people that have the power to make a difference. And that's how I ended up at the Conservation Law Foundation and as the Lake Champlain Lakekeeper. Because I wanted to be able to do all this work, check in with you all, become this sort of connection. Actually, really understand what the issues are, that each part of this lake is so big, right? It's like five lakes in one. So many animals, so many people, so many people working and living and playing. How can we all get together and make a difference? And so I realized that my job at the Conservation Law Foundation as the lakekeeper, kind of let me be Doctor Dolittle. I actually get to speak for the fish because they don't have a voice. And I get to be a little bit like the Lorax, I've got the Lorax over there. And the Lorax, right, speaks for the trees because the trees can't talk. And so the great part about that is that I can't do this work alone. All of you here and everybody out there can be Doctor Dolittle and be the Lorax. You all can help speak for the trees. And so it's kind of like this story that I'm telling today, I kind of thought about it afterwards, I'm like, oh my god, I'm gonna cry. I'm like, it's kind of a love story. Like I kept thinking, what am I gonna say? Am I gonna do an adventure story? It's really a love story. It's a love story about animals, it's a love story about this place, and it's a love story about community. So just kinda sharing that today and saying thank you for letting me be here, sharing my love story with you. And I hope you all can share your love stories with me because I'd really love to hear them. So thank you.
Thank you Julie, that was great. Next, we would like to invite Bridget Butler up to speak. Bridget is the Executive Director of Friends of Northern Lake Champlain, bringing over two decades of experience in conservation, environmental education, and community engagement. A respected voice in the region's birding and watershed communities. She has worked with organizations like Audubon Vermont, Cold Hollow to Canada, and ECHO. And founded Bird Diva Consulting to connect people with nature. At FNOC, she leads efforts to reduce land use pollution, strengthen partnerships, inspire community-driven solutions for clean water and resilient ecosystems in the Lake Champlain watershed. Thank you Bridget.
Good evening everybody. I just wanna take a moment and shout out to Nora Brown over there. Do you see her under the blue tent? She is one of Northwest Regional Planning Commission's staff, Eco AmeriCorps members. And then Gracie Grimes here, that just introduced me. She's another Eco AmeriCorps member that has been working with us for the past almost year. And those two are the two women that put this event together. So I wanna make sure we recognize them and give them a big round of applause for tonight. Thank you. Thanks for ordering up the gorgeous weather too, and the breeze off the lake, it's so delightful. I feel a little spoiled, kinda like Julie said, we should all be facing the other direction, right? So the storyteller gets the best view right now. So at any point, you will not hurt my feelings if you turn away for a second to look at the lake, please do that. All right, my story... All right, my story goes back 20 years. And I'm going to try to involve all of you in this story as well. So hopefully you're not too shy, and you don't mind making sounds. I don't know, either with your hands or with your mouth, we're going to give that a go as little kind of tidbits along with the story. So, 20 years ago, I was living down in the Mad River Valley and had gotten a really great job in Maine for a while, and moved to Maine, and then came back here to Vermont again. And was really unsettled and didn't know where I was going to be or where I was going to work. And I had this wonderful amount of time between jobs to just explore. And I don't know if that's something that you like to do when you get to a new place, is kind of just hit the road and just drive all those little backroads and those little places that you're like, ooh, I'm curious where this goes or where that goes. And at the time, I had this sweet little Honda Fit. Do you remember those vehicles? Yeah, yeah, okay. And it was orange, orange is like my favorite color. And I had an orange kayak. So, my exploration started to take me to different waterways, where I could get on the water in my kayak and connect in that way. So, I had fallen in love with a guy up here. And I moved up here into the St. Albans area. And again, had all this time to just kind of explore. And so, there was one day where I had gone to the refuge. Anybody know the Mississauga National Wildlife Refuge in Swanton? How many of you have been there before? Okay, if you have not been there, this is a place you got to go and check out this summer. They have monthly bird walks there, they have all kinds of great events. There's a cute little visitor center there, they're going to have a wildlife festival in the fall there as well. And there's all these different trails that you can explore. And there are different fishing access points that you can get to. So, if you go to the refuge and you get up there, just before you turn down the road to go to the visitor center, there's this spot called Charcoal Creek. And you'll see on one side of the road, there's like a fishing access pot, and, and then a wetland that just extends all the way out toward the lake. If you look on the other side of the road, the south side of the road, you're going to see Maquam bog, which is a really unique habitat. So you have this beautiful wetland on one side of the road, Maquam bog on the other, and this beautiful little small creek called Charcoal Creek, that basically kind of flows through this wetland and then out to what we call Campbell Bay, which is another amazing spot. Do any of you know my alter ego? Who else am I known as? Ah, yes, I'm also known as the Bird Diva. So, I love to go places where there's lots of birds. And Campbell Bay and Charcoal Creek are one of these places, because they have such unique habitats, right? So we have this bog on one side of the road with all these crazy birds that like bogs. And on the other side of the road is the wetland, which is a really special and unique place, because Charcoal Creek is slow-moving. It's not open to the entire bay until you get out toward the mouth, where it empties out into the bay. So it's slow-moving, and there's a beautiful wild rice wetland. It's one of the only places in Vermont. We have a few places across Vermont where we can experience this habitat. It's very uncommon, and it's often really fragile as well. So, lots of boat activity can actually harm the wild rice, which is why the refuge manages it in that way, where we don't have boats going through that area, where it's a great place for canoeing and kayaking and fishing. How many of you like fishing? Okay, awesome. Bowfin, bass, pike in this area, and then like every other kind of fish you can imagine. And that's because this is a nursery. Wetlands are nurseries for fish and all kinds of other animals as well. So, I decided that I needed to go and explore Charcoal Creek. It's about two miles from where you put in at the fishing access, out to where Campbell Bay sits, where the Mississauga River comes in, and it's the delta where the Mississauga River empties out into Lake Champlain. And it's all part of the refuge, so it's all protected, absolutely beautiful. Okay, so now this is where you're going to help me. I'm going to take you on my little kayak trip. And I'm going to ask you to make some sounds with me as we go, okay? So I'm going to give you the different sounds that we're going to make, okay? And guess what? They're all bird sounds. Go figure. All right, so the first one is from the majestic bald eagle that we have nesting up there at the refuge. And so, whenever I say bald eagle, I want you to go dun, da, da, dun. Right, triumphant, majestic bird, okay? Let's practice. And then I saw a bald eagle. Perfect, okay. Now, there's another bird that I'm going to encounter. It's like just the opposite end of the spectrum of bald eagle. This is a tiny little bird, little brown bird, that likes to hang out and nest in the wild rice. These birds are called marsh wrens. They build a bunch of little dummy nests, the male does, and then the female comes along and she picks the one that she really likes the best, okay? But they're loud, and they're saucy, and they're a little bit secretive. So all you hear is a chik, chik. And then, I'm going to clap my hands, because it's really hard to do the staccato sound that they make at the end, so chik, chik. All right, so if I say marsh wren, you're going to go chik, chik. You ready? And then, the marsh wren popped out of nowhere. Okay, awesome, you got it, all right. Who else is on my list? Okay, what if I saw a bald eagle? Yes, all right. Let's add red-winged blackbird, because the marshes there are full of red-winged blackbirds. And this is a spot where they come to roost at night. And then during migration, they're going to be feeding on the wild rice and leaving. And so, does anybody know what red-winged blackbird says? Okay, so, I'm going to teach you the one that this kid taught me, because I told this little kid at a third grade field trip one time, that they sing conklaree, and he said, no, Bridget, they sing Burger King. All right, so if I say, I saw a flock of red-winged blackbirds. It's really funny to say that along with a bird, I love it. All right, so we've got red-winged blackbird. I'm going to give you one more that we're going to use our hands for. So oftentimes, red-winged blackbirds form these big, huge murmurations, right? When they all come together, especially during migration. And the sound of their wings, when you get into maybe a flock, can sound like this, okay? So if I say flocking red-winged blackbirds, you're going to do, and then you're going to sing, Burger King. Good job. All right, so on this day, this beautiful day, and I have a picture of it. I have my orange hat on, my orange sun hat on, and these like killer sunglasses that I lost, and a green tank top, and my orange flotation device, right, safety first. And my binoculars are somehow over the top of the orange safety device. And I've slipped my kayak into the water. And the whole thing that I really want to do is to follow the red-winged blackbirds. Burger King, you guys got to give it a little more oomph. We got a small audience here, so you got to give me a little more, okay? And they were flocking way out in the distance. Okay, good job. All right, so the whole purpose here was, I wanted to see where these birds were and what they were doing, and I could only see them in the distance, these like swirling kind of clouds of blackbirds. So as I slipped my kayak into the water and I started to head out there, right, there's this beautiful channel for Charcoal Creek and all this wetland to the right and to the left of me. And the, it was late in the summer, so the wild rice was at that point where the heads of the rice were just starting to go from that kind of beautiful stage green color to a deep purple color, and they're all swaying in the breeze. And the birds are coming in and out of them. And so I'm paddling, and I'm trying to get out there. And as I'm going out there, there's dragonflies and damselflies dipping in and around me and sitting on the front of my kayak, just grooving with me as I head out into Charcoal Creek. And slowly, as I make my way out, the bald eagle flies over. And I see that, there you go, dun, da, da, dun. And I see that eagle not above me, but I see the shadow cross the bow of my kayak first. And then I look up and I catch a view of the bald eagle. Now, in Vermont, bald eagles were kind of extirpated from here for a short amount of time. Fish and Wildlife did a lot of work to try to bring them back, to make sure that we had habitat for them. And what's really wonderful is, one of the nesting sites that we have in the state now is at the Wildlife Refuge. So I felt very fortunate to be able to see this majestic bald eagle, dun, da, da, dun, as my first introduction out onto Charcoal Creek. So I kept paddling, and this is the time of the year when all the water lilies start to go to seed, so the flowers weren't there, but the, the big leaf masses were still floating on top of the water, and the seed heads were starting to develop. And I got closer and closer to where that wild rice was. And I was like, okay, I'm going to be able to make it, I can get out here, I'm going to be able to catch up with the red-winged blackbirds. Burger King, there you go. So catching up with the red-winged blackbirds. As I did that though, I heard this funky little bird from the grass in the distance. And I thought, that's not red-winged blackbird, that's somebody else. I've got to get closer. And so, it pushed my way through the wild rice. And if you've ever been in a kayak before and you're down low on the water, it's this whole different perspective and a whole different way of connecting with the water. I think even different than a canoe, right? In a canoe, you sit up a little bit more, the kayak, you're down low, you're at eye level. And all of a sudden, I think I really felt like marsh wren. Do you remember marsh wren? All right, I felt like marsh wren down deep in the grasses. And I thought, this is the day that I'm going to be able to see one of these secretive little birds. And so I pushed slowly through the grass, and the tip of my boat, like just that orange tip of the kayak kind of parting the grasses. And wouldn't you know it, a saucy little wren perked up, popped out of the grass, and like literally was straddling one strand of grass with one foot, and another strand of grass with the other foot, and gave me one of those scolding calls again. There we go. But I had gotten a chance to see that little marsh wren. Okay, but that's not the bird I came here to see. The murmurations are still on the horizon. I had to paddle a little bit more to get out there finally. And each time I got closer, you know what they did? That flock flew further away. And I was like, oh my gosh, I'm never going to get into this. This is kind of a bummer, right? This is like what happens with birders. You set this intention to go and see something particular, and then you get sad because you don't get to see it. And I had kind of forgotten that I just got to see a marsh wren doing this like balancing act between two pieces of grass. And I got so focused on that murmuration that was out there. And so I just sat there, because I thought, it's too far, it's never going to happen. And wouldn't you know it, the murmuration changed course. And that flock started to come towards me. And I just sat there, and I held my breath for a minute or two in the grasses, and I thought, this could be the moment. And Julie Silverman over there, you, you and I were talking about social media earlier and being a Luddite. So back in the day, before cell phones, there were these little cameras called flip cameras that you could get, and then you could plug them into your computer and they would download the video. And I pulled, slowly pulled up my flip camera and had it sitting there with me. And the murmuration came in around me, all of those flocking birds, oh my gosh. And the calls of the red-winged blackbirds going conklaree, or Burger King, as the case may be. And I was enveloped, not only by the wild rice, but by the birds themselves. And the stalks were bending with them, and they were bending over the top of my kayak. And I, I think I held my breath in that moment. And just thought, it came back around to me. They came back around to me. And I just had sat there, floating on the water, waiting for that moment. This is a connection to place that is so vibrant in my brain, that it's still sticky 20 years later. And this is why we tell stories, and this is why we do the work that we do, because it's really about making these connections, remembering them, sharing them, and then looking at all the opportunities. This is why we have all of our partners here, to take action, right? So when we form these little threads of connection with marsh wren, and I'm going to do this again, with marsh wren, or the flocking of red-winged blackbird, Burger King. Or you get that bald eagle, dun, da, da, dun, flying over. Those are your cues that you are part of the natural world too, and you can be a part of caring for it. I want to thank you all so much for being here tonight. And I hope some of you will consider sharing your stories next year. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Bridget, for that beautiful story. We're going to take a short break before we get back to our storytelling. So enjoy some music, enjoy some food, go talk to our partners and learn about all the great work that they do, and we'll see you back here in a few minutes.
I'm waiting on you to call me darling. I wanna hear you say that you'll be mine. Don't you know this heart inside is slowly dying? Lord, won't you call me darling sometime? Well, it seems like a million years and I must have cried a million tears. That's the reason why I say I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Lord, won't you call me darling sometime? I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Each night I stay awake and walk the floor. But now the rain has fallen on my windows. Lord, I've never been so lonesome before. Well, it seems like a million years and I must have cried a million tears. That's the reason why I say I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Lord, won't you call me darling sometime? I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Each night I stay awake and walk the floor. But now the rain has fallen on my windows. Lord, I've never been so lonesome before. Well, it seems like a million years and I must have cried a million tears. That's the reason why I say I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Lord, won't you call me darling sometime? I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Each night I stay awake and walk the floor. But now the rain has fallen on my windows. Lord, won't you call me darling sometime? I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Each night I stay awake and walk the floor. But now the rain has fallen on my windows. Lord, won't you call me darling sometime? I'm waiting on you to call me darling. Each night I stay awake and walk the floor. But now the rain has fallen on my windows. How do you remember the hours we spent swinging on the old swinging bridge? From June to December, again we went, swinging on the old swinging bridge. These memories haunt me each night in my dreams, it seems I can still see you there. Your loving arms held out to me, smiling so sweet and so fair. Now we build a dream across the old mill stream, and though the years have gone by, I still remember you here in my heart, and wonder if you wonder why. These memories haunt me each night in my dreams, it seems I can still see you there. Your loving arms held out to me, smiling so sweet and so fair. These memories haunt me each night in my dreams, it seems I can still see you there. Your loving arms held out to me, smiling so sweet and so fair.
Thank y'all, we believe we're gonna get into our backup.
Thank you Otter Creek, we're gonna get started again with the second half of our stories. So first up is Corina King of the St. Albans Museum. Corina is the Operations and Outreach Coordinator for the St. Albans Museum. She has spent the better part of 25 years working in water quality protection as a research scientist, published author, and now a historian.
Good evening. I'm going to take everybody back before technology, before we had roads in St. Albans, before we had railroads. Over 200 years ago, to a time where we would look out into this beautiful bay and see boats. For a time, St. Albans Bay actually rivaled Burlington Bay as the most active port on Lake Champlain. Early 1800s residents and businesses alike relied heavily on boats for transportation and to get merchandised here to St. Albans and to ship it out. In 1823, three St. Albans merchants that were right here in the bay, in anticipation of the completion of the Lake Champlain Canal, built an innovative boat. This boat was a barge that could go on canals, and it had masts as a sailboat, so it could sail on the lake as well. This boat was called the Gleaner. Now, the Gleaner was the very first vessel ever to go from Lake Champlain through the Champlain Canal, down the Hudson River, to New York City. That completion of the Champlain Canal and the innovation of that boat opened up so much economic prosperity for us here. And then the big boost came another 25 years later, when we got the railroad. Now, there were celebrations along many of the ports that they stopped at, along the Hudson River all the way down to New York City. And one of those ports had a special event where they actually read a poem off. This poem was written by the Boston Bard, and I'm going to read that for you now. This poem took me a while to find, actually, in an 1823 newspaper. So don't mind the terminology, because it is original. And the name of the poem is "The Gleaner or Bark of the Mountain." 'Tis the bark of the mountain, the boat of the steep. She comes like a vision, all cheering and bright. From the lake she emerges, she hails the blue deep, and looks on the regions of glory and light. How dear to the freeman, the priesthood she bears, how dear to his bosom the prospect she brings. She shines like a star through the vista of years, while the minstrel of time thus enchantingly sings. Lo, the pine of the mountain, the oak of the hill, shall brave the rude blast of the bounteous abyss. Thy garners Vermont, Europe's riches shall fill, and the wave of the lake, the Atlantic shall kiss. With gratitude then shall thy offspring revere, the science that taught thee the harvest to reap, that bade to the ocean, the landman to steer, his bark of the mountain, and boat of the steep. And if you'd like to see an image of the Gleaner and some other historical information about the bay, please come over to my table, thank you.
Thank you Corina, that was great. Next, we would like to welcome Colleen Hickey to join us to speak today. Colleen has been conducting outreach programs with the Lake Champlain Watershed in northern New York, Vermont, and southern Quebec since 1991. She has focused on media outreach, school programs, educator training, and public outreach programs pertaining to the watershed. Colleen received her MA in Urban and Environmental Policy from Tufts University, and her BS in Community Development from the University of New Hampshire. She also held positions as the Communications Director for United Way of Greater Nashua, and was employed as a New Hampshire Regional Planner. Thank you, Colleen.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me okay? Yep, okay, super. So, as Gracie said, I am from the Lake Champlain Basin Program. I've been there 34 years. I know many of the folks who have exhibits here today, and I just want you to know that they are really strong partners of the Basin Program, and they showcase how your tax dollars are being used every day. Here's the good news for me. As Julie said, I retire in three weeks. I'm not Colleen from the Basin Program today. I'm Colleen Hickey from 1345 Georgia Shore Road. So, I'm switching it up, and I'm gonna try a little personal story. I think it's really important to make the local connection as a speaker. My mom was a second-generation St. Albans native. Her people came from Cork, Ireland. They emigrated to Montreal in New York City. She had a couple of siblings here. My dad came in in eighth grade. His dad worked at Bath Iron Works. They lived in Augusta, Maine. He was also second-generation for Augusta, Maine, for the family. They met in eighth grade. They were high school sweethearts. My mother ended up working at Fonda Container. My dad ended up working at the Burlington Airport as a flagger for incoming flights. He was always a little nuts. But what they brought together was a family of four kids with access to three female cousins and three male cousins on my mother's side of the family. And we had a ball on this lake for all of these years, and we're gathering again at the ages of 65 to 83 in August. So the lake is critically important to my soul, and to my family's soul. So I wanted to try something different today. I remember when my dad said that he and my mom, for their very first date, they walked up St. Albans Hill to what, as kids, we always called the golf ball. My dad played at St. Mary's as a football player. I know Corina was just on, and I know that Don Minor had been a longtime advocate for the museum and history of St. Albans, and has since passed. But Don Minor, Bud Pryor, there were a whole bunch. John Finn, who was the sheriff. Leo Smith, I think, was one of the partners in the cornerstone. So local Vermont was important. And the last thing I'll tell you about my family is that, over there, my mother had one of her two bridal showers at B. Butler's house. And over there, my mother had her other shower over at the Hanses camp. Over there, her ship finally came in, according to a newspaper clipping, and her wedding gifts were rowed in by rowboat. So there's a lot of history there. Today, I'm going to focus, it's such a hot day, that I just wanted to sort of use the opportunity to do something quiet. And I was just curious, from a show of hands, how many of you ever either went to summer camps or had access to friends' camps, or lived on the lake at all during the summer? So a handful. You might have your own special place somewhere in the watershed that you listen, you find your quiet spot. So I'm gonna run through what I call "Summer Sounds" of the Georgia Shore that I have experienced over my 65 years. But I want you to think about a particular sound that you have heard in the environment that you just won't forget. It's something that comes to mind when you think of that special place, and we'll call it out at the end. Here we go. Summer sounds on the Georgia Shore. The morning stillness, the occasional bass jumping, the call of the loons, the darn noisy crows, coffee perking, the first flush. And if you've been in a camp, you know what I mean. We could all hear that. The water pump doing its job, the slider screen door squeaking open, bacon sizzling, the light splash from skipping rocks on the beach, the chatter and laughter from the beach below the camp, the kingfisher call, rocks hitting the cousins' raft thrown by kids with really good aim, the mesmerizing hum of tractors mowing the fields and baling hay, cows mooing, the shuffle of runners, the whoosh of bicycles, the exchange of cheery "good mornings" as they all went by the picnic table, the clank of horseshoes, meaning the ones that you play, the creaking of wooden oars, the roar of Dad's outboard motor, the thumping of waves against the boat while fishing, the splash of the common terns diving for breakfast, the dragonfly's soft zippy sounds as the frisbee hits the water nearby, the distant hum of motorboats, the splashing and laughter from the floats and the raft, the flap of the large sailboat as it tacks near shore, the slamming of the wooden screen door at the cousins' as it closes, the "storm's coming" bellow from my mother as she watches the rain line cross over from New York and the islands, the rumble of thunder and the cracks of lightning, the bang of the camp shutters and high winds, the sound of falling sticks hitting the deck, the rain on the camp's metal roof, the hail on the camp's metal roof, the sounds of Yahtzee dice during the storms, the human complaints launched when you are sent back home in a game of parcheesi during the storms, the Ospreys call for dinner, the buzz of mosquitoes, frogs croaking, the hiss of sparklers, the pop of cherry bombs under cans, booming fireworks, cracking at the bonfire, ice swishing as refreshments are grabbed from the cooler one more time, waves lapping the beach at night, owls hooting, the oohs and ahs for the shooting stars, coyotes yipping, the "goodnight hour," "goodnight, Bridget," beeping as car doors are locked remotely, and the evening stillness. So those are some of my favorite sounds as I reflect back. Anyone else have a favorite sound they want to share?
Cannonball!
Cannonball, cannonball, off the dock, okay, anyone else? Summer remembrances, maybe the ice cracking in the winter? You got that here on the bay. Okay, so that's what I wanted to share, is Colleen Hickey from 1345 Georgia Shore Road. I hope you have a lovely summer, I hope you get out on the lake, and I hope you take a state of the lake from any of these exhibitors over here to learn more. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Colleen, for sharing that story with us. Our last speaker this evening is Bill Roberts. Bill grew up in St. Albans. He is a sixth-generation, mostly Scottish immigrant with a French name and either an Iroquois or Mohawk limb in the family tree. He has a nursing degree, a medical degree, a board certification in Anesthesiology and Addiction Medicine, and a PhD in Neuroscience. And he's the Director of Anesthesia Strategy at the University of Rochester, having returned there in 2019 after ending a 20-year practice at the Northwestern Medical Center in St. Albans, where he may have put you to sleep for surgery. Tonight, he will share the smells and colors of a trip from St. Albans to Sampson's Point in 1965, unrestrained in the back of a station wagon with no seatbelt on and the big back window open.
I love that the sounds are followed by the colors and the smells. So if somebody did hearing earlier and I missed that, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, from our house in St. Albans on High Street, we would come to the lake on Sampson's Point about two miles north of here. And this time of year, we'd be escaping the heat. So the first color green to talk about, and the smell of that color green, is the lawn that I mowed before we would get in the station wagon and come down to the lake to cool off. And everybody knows the smell of fresh-mowed grass, so I don't think we need to spend much time on the grass mowing. But the next smell is a little more subtle, and it's hard for people now to recognize the smell of corn that's two and a half, three feet tall, because it does have a smell, but you can't smell it if you're in your car with the windows up and the air conditioning on, which is what we're mostly used to now. But in the back of that station wagon, I can tell you that there's no escaping any smell. And corn at that height doesn't smell like the soil when it was planted, and it doesn't smell like the silage when it's chopped, and it doesn't smell like rain. It smells a little bit sweet, and I don't know if that's the flowering of the corn, you know, the tasseling on the top of the corn that you can smell, but it definitely has a smell. And you would smell that from the edge of St. Albans, about where the sheriff's office is now. You'd start to hit cornfields, and you'd have cornfields all the way down to the farm here, just before you approached the bay. And that smell is a different green, a deeper green. It's not as strong as the mowed grass green smell, but it's this nice little sweet smell, kind of subtle. And it is followed by sequentially two smells that are not subtle and not nice. Now, the S-curves out back here, going around this park entry, did not exist. It was one sweeping corner. And from the Bay Park Store, what we called the Bay Park Store, I don't know what it was actually called, to Black Bridge, there were two odors and two different greens. And the first green would extend from this retaining wall, the redstone wall here just beyond the grass. It would go out about 40 feet, it would be two and a half or three feet thick. And it was rotting vegetation that would blow in from the prevailing winds coming from the south and west. And so if the wind had been from south and west, there would be nobody in the water on this shoreline from the whole length of the bay over to Black Bridge, because you couldn't reach the water without stepping over or through vegetation. Now, I'm not a botanist, and I'm not a hydrologist. Now, I'm not a botanist, and I'm not a hydrologist, and I'm not an ecologist. I just know that that stunk. And it was interfering with people's enjoyment of the water. And the next odor, which is just beyond the entrance gates here, right over there, you would literally plug your nose for. And you would not drive through there and breathe through your nose because the stench was horrific. We didn't think it was abnormal. It was the only experience that I had as a six- or seven-year-old. That's what that section of road smelled like. It used to be actually trees on the right-hand side until sometime in the 70s, Fuzzy Solomon cut all those trees in the winter on the ice. And then the cattails had taken off and really taken over that area, and there's almost no trees. And for whatever reason, the stench that I would plug my nose against doesn't exist anymore. I never smell it. I haven't smelled it since I've been back from my college days. And I can't say that I really endorse or think that anyone will be able to explain to me why that stench no longer exists, but I know it's good. I know it's better now than it was then. Beyond the stench, you'd be back in the cornfields, turn left onto Sampson's Point Road. When you hit the lake, turn left, go south about 20 camps, and you're able to see another green that's very subtle, and it does have an odor. But I can't remember what it smelled like. All I know is it was the last thing you smelled before you cooled off because you were about to get in the water and actually be refreshed from your day's activities up in the city. And it was probably an algae. It was suspended in the water, small particles. The water was a little bit murky, but the smell was not offensive. And I have no idea whether or not that algae was dangerous or good or bad. All I know is, since the zebra mussels arrived, I don't see it anymore. The water is crystal clear to the bottom. It's as if it's glass. If there's no waves, you can see every stone on the bottom. But don't go in without your shoes. We used to get cut by shale all the time, and by no means did we put on shoes. We wouldn't wear shoes on the shale beach for our life, but we would put on shoes now because it's hamburger when you come out. So the last colored green, that green that you see just before you get in the water in 1963 or '04, or whatever year that was, is gone. And I think it's because of the zebra mussels. But again, I don't really know, and I don't really think that I can be satisfied that anyone will be able to tell me that they absolutely know why that algae that I used to see suspended in the water is not there. But I do know that I never had seen a zebra mussel in my entire life until sometime in the last 12 or 14 years. So the lake is changing, and the things that change are changing because of things that we do. Some of those things are obviously working because the stench that used to stop me from breathing for about a half a mile stretch of road right here is no longer there. That has to be a good thing. And I don't know if that's because of the way the runoff is being managed or if it's the way the crops are being managed or the way the manure is being managed. But I know that whatever changes happen going forward from now are going to be changes that come out of our decision to benefit ourselves. And hopefully, the greens that we'll see from now into the future will continue to be positive changes. The grass mowing isn't going to change. I think the corn is here for the good. I don't see the vegetation on the beach, and I haven't seen vegetation on this beach for at least a decade. The stench is gone. And I'm really excited about whatever it is that you all are doing that benefit the lake. I'm very excited that people are engaged enough to do those things because I think whatever they are that are working, they are working. And so I thank you for it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Roberts. That was great. And thank you all so much for being here tonight and being such an incredible part of this special evening. To our storytellers, thank you so much for your honesty, your humor, your courage, and your willingness to share a piece of yourself with us. To everyone who listened, thank you for your presence. Events like this remind us how deeply our lives are intertwined, with each other and with the watershed that holds us. We hope that you leave tonight not only entertained, but more connected to this landscape and to your neighbors. Maybe you've remembered an old story of your own. Maybe you're thinking differently about the water around us. That's the power of storytelling. It opens doors. As we close, we invite you to linger a little longer. Enjoy the view, start a conversation, ask someone about their watershed story. And finally, thank you again for being part of Tales from the Watershed. We hope to see you again next time and maybe even hear your voice onstage. Have a good night and safe travels home. One last thing. We are doing our free rain barrel giveaway, so if you put a ticket in the bucket, we are doing that now.
The winner is David Friedman? Yay, David! Thank you, everyone, for coming. Stick around. We'll have a little more music and a little more time to enjoy the beautiful lake.
Thank you so much for coming out. I really appreciate you being here. Are you attached with Stacy? We're gonna do it. Thank you. I don't know how you pick up on this.